Thank you, please join us in a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Anderson?
Present.
Bullock?
Here.
Juris?
Here.
Madigan?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
O'Leary?
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of Council on December 15, 2014. Move to adopt without the mis... I'm sorry, I don't want to do that. I want to move to defer.
Second.
On that motion to defer, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Without objection from my colleagues, I would like to move item 19 to the front of the agenda. Item 19, communication from Councilman Mark regarding commending Lakewood Library's five-star rating. Councilman Mark, thank you.
Dear colleagues, according to the State Library of Ohio, libraries are rated on the performance within categories or peer groups determined by operating expenditures, the performance of measures, and points awarded in the areas of circulation, library visits, program attendance, and public internet use. The total number of points earned in each of these areas determines the number of stars a library receives. It is with great pride that we acknowledge Lakewood's Public Library, five-star rating in America's star libraries. Lakewood's Public Library is one of only six libraries in the state of Ohio with its highest of ratings. Of course, we all know that our Lakewood Library is well-used and a vibrant asset to the city, and creates a dynamic, versatile community center, and has an economic engine in helping people find jobs and gain the skills with new technologies that are needed to get ahead in their careers. Kudos to all those in Lakewood Library systems that contribute to this success. How lucky we are to have such a treasure in our fine city. And I'd like to welcome the Director of the Library, Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Pramod. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for doing such a tactful job representing our city through the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I move to receive and file that communication.
Certainly.
On that motion, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Item 20, Resolution 8792-15, a resolution to congratulate Lakewood Public Library on being awarded a perfect five-star rating from Public Library Service. Thank you. On that motion? On that motion to adopt? Do I have a second? On that motion, is there any comment or deliberation from this body? I will begin. Thank you both for being here, and congratulations, as Councilwoman Mark said, and I'm glad you brought it forward. We all like about the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just a few comments with your permission?
Yes.
Madam President, first of all, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilperson Mars. Thanks to all of you, Mr. Mayor, for your continued support of Lakewood Public Library. With me here tonight is Mr. Scott Pramod, President and Library Board of Trustees. We are all humbled yet grateful that the Lakewood Public Library received a five-star designation by Library Journal. The Lakewood Public Library continues to be recognized among the best in the nation. But this I do know, the true stars behind the Lakewood Public Library are the patrons who've supported the institution for 99 years, the trustees who are appointed by the school board that have served the library without compensation, and who, over the years, have created a culture of excellence, transparency, efficiency, and accountability to the taxpayers. And third, the library employees who work not when it's convenient for them, but when it's convenient for the Lakewood Public Library. The Lakewood Public Library is the only public library in Ohio that's open on a Friday evening, on a Saturday evening, and a Sunday evening. The Lakewood Public Library is one of 251 public library systems in Ohio, and yet we're open to the public more hours than any other public library in the state. That is our distinction, and that's something we're very proud of. July 1st, 2009, the Lakewood Public Library and all public libraries in Ohio did face financial crisis with a 30 percent reduction in state funding. We were able to weather that storm without cutting hours, without closing our branch, and without diminishing the amount of money we spent on purchasing library materials, including books, magazines, and ebooks. And for that, we have, I could thank the library trustees for their stewardships, but also a very special library employee, Mr. Tim Lasky. Mr. Tim Lasky is the library's fiscal officer. He was appointed fiscal officer of the Lakewood Public Library on December 31st, actually July 1st, 1991. Mr. Lasky served as the library's fiscal officer for 23 years. Mr. Lasky did retire from the library effective December 31st of this year. And this I want the community to understand, it was Mr. Lasky with his well-deserved reputation for professionalism, excellence, integrity, and an unmatched spirit of civic responsibility and duty that he brought to the library, and it was with Mr. Lasky's great support that he steered the library through very difficult times and uncertainty, and with his guidance, he enabled the library to continue its, providing the community a level of excellence and to maintain its status among public libraries in the nation. So, we do congratulate Mr. Lasky on his retirement from the library, and he is one of many library employees who do so much for the library and do so very gratefully.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a motion in the second floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. We'd love to give a picture for us. My honor, to you.
I think in the middle here, Mr. Crawford, we've got a good background here with the lady. Those of you who are taller than you are.
If you, Madam Clerk, if you would, I would like to watch. Item 1, community of the whole report regarding community of the whole 15, 15 points. Thank you. The Committee of the Whole met this evening, beginning at 6:30, to discuss appointments to a variety of boards and commissions. We made a decision on two, which we, which, one of which is the Board of Building Standards and Building Appeals and Architectural Board of Review, and the other, the Lakewood Community Hospital, the Lakewood Hospital Association Committee Board. The others, we will continue our conversations and make appointments before the 15th of this month. We deferred discussion on proposed ordinance 3614 and deferred discussion on proposed resolution 8787-14. Move to receive and file that oral communication.
Certainly.
On that, is there discussion on that motion in the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 2, Resolution 8770-15, move to defer. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 3, Resolution 8772-14, a resolution appointing length to the Board of Building Standards and Building Appeals and the Architectural Board of Review to the five-year term. Move to insert the name Dan Mossen on that motion. Is there discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there discussion? Madam Clerk? Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item 4, Resolution 8773-14, move to defer. Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 5, Resolution 8774-14, a resolution, move to defer.
Second.
Those... Is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 6, Resolution 8775-14, move to defer.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 7, Resolution 8776-14, a resolution appointing length to the Board of Nuisance and Baitment Appeals. Move to defer.
Second.
Is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 8, Resolution 8777-14, a resolution appointing length as a community organization trustee to the Lakewood Hospital Association Committee Board. Move to insert the name Joe in that.
Certainly.
And that motion has been made in seconded. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
A move to adopt.
Second.
Is there discussion? Madam Clerk? Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item 9, Resolution 8778-14, a resolution appointing length to the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board. Move to defer.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 10, Resolution 8779-14, a resolution appointing length to the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board. Move to defer.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 11, Ordinance 3614, an ordinance to repeal the existing Chapter 1143 of Street Parking of the zoning code into an empty chapter, 1143 parking, placed on first reading and referred to the Committee of the Whole, 102014, second reading, 11314. Move to defer.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is being deferred because our Director of Development, Drew Siley, who will lead us through this deliberation, is with the school board, presenting to the school board at the, tonight, and we are going to defer until the next scheduled meeting, Council, which is Tuesday, January 20. On that motion, is there further discussion?
I'm sure.
Councilwoman Black?
Do we have the five-year consolidated plan? I don't know if we do.
We do. It is online, and it, and it is accessible, I believe, online and also with Director Siley.
Okay. I, I, I move the view that we ought to take our time on these matters, and I'm hoping that we will not pass the first night Council has the chance to deliberate upon us, given that it's a five-year plan, and if we're going to shape CDBG funding decisions over a period of time, we need to live within the five-year plan that we adopt. So, to me, this is something to be very thoughtful about and take our time on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Black. We're just, we're deferring. The conversation will begin with... We're just, we're simply deferring this. The conversation will include Director Siley next week. There's no motion to pass anything.
I understand.
So, on that motion to defer, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 12, Resolution 8787-14, a resolution to submit the five-year consolidated plan required receiving Federal Community Development Plan, Emergency Solution Program, and Home Development Partnership, funding from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, referred to Committee of the Whole, 12114. Move to defer.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm moving to defer for the same reason. Director Siley, who will help walk us through this discussion, is presenting at the Lakewood School Board tonight. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 13, Health and Human Services Committee Report Regarding 8781-14. Councilwoman Mark?
Thank you. The Health and Human Service Committee met tonight with Councilwoman Juris, Anderson, O'Leary present, and Chief Stilman, and both are chiefs, we hear. So, we discussed the Resolution 8781-14 authorizing the City of Lakewood's participation under an agreement between the West Shore Council of Governments and the Metro Health System for the provision of professional tactical medical control services. The Committee unanimously approved this resolution, and I move to receive and file.
I will second that. On that motion to receive and file, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 14, Resolution 8781-14, a resolution authorizing Lakewood's participation under an agreement between the West Shore Council of Governments and the Metro Health System for the provision of professional tactical medical control services. Move to adopt.
Certainly.
Discussion? Thank you, Councilwoman Mark, for getting us through this, and both chiefs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 15, Rules and Ordances Committee Report Regarding 5914 and 2014.
Madam Chair, thank you. The Rules and Ordances Committee just met on these two items this evening, and we respectfully request that we defer until next year.
Move to receive and file that oral communication. Is there discussion on the oral communication? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Item 16, Ordinance 5914, an ordinance to establish minimum home coverage limits, and fees required under various sections of Lakewood classified ordinances related to insurance placed on first reading and preferred reading. Rules and Ordances Committee, 12114, second reading, 1115-14. Move to defer.
Second.
Is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 17, Ordinance 6014, an ordinance to establish minimum fee required for a second annual license for certain sections, 73702, made in classified ordinances, placed on first reading and approved. Rules and Ordances Committee, 12114, second reading, 1115-14. Move to defer.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 18, Ordinance 6114, an ordinance to approve the editing and rekindling of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various requirements of the classified ordinances and provided for implementation of certain matters, placed on first reading, and refer to the Rules and Ordances Committee, 1215-14. Move to place on second.
Second.
Is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 21, Communication from Mayor Summers Regarding An Appointment to Lakewood Civil Service Commission. Mayor Summers?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the City Council. This is on accident. It is, Joe Givens is an important citizen tonight, in addition to your appointment as a member of the Hospital Association Trustees. I'm pleased to announce that he has been serving for another three years on a civil service commission. As, as, as a mayor, I have known to appreciate the importance of the civil service body to serve as a, an important deliberation on making sure folks that are appointed that are not part of the bargaining unit qualify for jobs that they're being appointed to, and that the jobs, in fact, meet criteria that determine whether they should or should not be in bargaining groups as well. So, it's, it's, was, is a system developed over 100 years ago, and it serves Lakewood very well, and the reason it's able to do so is because the qualified members of this commission, which Joe is in his second term, so we're grateful that he's willing to continue his service along with the other two members. And by, by charter, one has to be a member of one party, and at least one other a member of the other party, so that we do not have any partisan views on these conversations. And I would say, at this level, we're only talking about performance and competence, but at other levels, we can imagine that that may not be the case, but here, we're very well certain, grateful for that to us.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that written and oral communication. Is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 22, Communication Regarding Development and Development Director Siley Regarding Construction of High School and Lakewood Elementary Zone. In the absence of Director Siley, is there someone from the administration who would like to review the communication? And it's not a fellow from the read, but...
No, that's, that's fine.
Thank you. Mayor Summers will step in for Director Siley.
Dear members of council, following this letter is an ordinance that if adopted, it will rezone four properties owned by the Lakewood City School District to allow for the upcoming improvements to the high school and Lincoln Elementary School. Rezoning of the first two parcels at 1601, 1604 Robinwood Avenue, and it lists the park permanent parcel numbers, is necessary for the construction of the new west wing of the high school. This is an academic one. Rezoning of the remaining parcels located at 1207 Summit Avenue and 1206 Lakeland Avenue are necessary for the construction of Lincoln Elementary School. All the parcels will be rezoned from R1H, single-family, high-density, to C4, commercial, public school. As you are aware, the schools have spent the last two years working through the planning, public outreach, and design phases for the construction of the three new elementary schools and major renovations to the high school. The design plans for both Lincoln Elementary School and the high school propose to expand each school site in order to improve overall site planning for each project, more effectively manage traffic circulation, and expand billable area for newly programmed classrooms. Please refer the ordinance to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. Respectfully submitted, Drew Siley, Director of the Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Summers. Move to receive and file the communication from the Planning Director.
Second.
On that motion, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Item 23, Ordinance 150, an ordinance to amend Section 1105 or 2 of the zoning code by changing and revising the zoning map of the city with respect to certain property as set forth and described as 77 Summit Avenue, 126 Lakeland Avenue, 1604 Robinwood Avenue, from single-family, high-density to commercial, public school. Move to place on first and refer to the Planning Commission.
Certainly.
On that motion, is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 24, Communication from Acting Chief Passover Regarding Authorization of Limited Police Authority, Cleveland Clinic Foundation Police Officers. Chief Malley, if you would, with the correspondence from Kevin Hess.
Thank you, Madam President. Your members of council, please find and attach a resolution which, if adopted, will grant police officers appointed by Cleveland Clinic Police Department to already exercise police powers to Lakewood Hospital. As you are aware, the city owns and operates the police of the Lakewood Hospital Association, sole members of Cleveland Clinic Foundation, which operates the hospital. This rule is necessary to allow Cleveland Clinic Police Officers to make arrests and to affectations on and surrounding Lakewood hospital property. Please refer to the Committee for discussion and recommendation.
Thank you. Move to receive and file the communication.
Certainly.
Discussion and the communication. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 25, Resolution 8793-15, a resolution authorizing and directing the air to enter interim reading of the Cleveland Clinic Foundation, which will allow the police officers employed by the Cleveland Clinic Police Department to exercise limited police powers within the City of Lakewood on and around hospital property operated by CCE. Move to place on first and refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Is there discussion on that motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 26, liquor permit application for new T3A permit classes to Trios Bar, 13362, Madison Avenue. Councilwoman Black?
Thanks, Madam Chair. We're in receipt of a police review and law department review of the liquor permit application. There was no statutory reason to object found. Your first and your third counsel person, Mr. Juris.
Now, the session has been again reviewed, police to object.
So, I move to file with objection.
On that motion, I'll second that motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item 27, liquor permit application for new C1 and C2 permit classes to UPM Express 1423, Madison Avenue. Councilwoman Black?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And once again, we've received a report with no statutory reason to object, having been found. I defer to the award counsel person, Mr. Juris.
Again, no reason to object.
Thank you. So, move to file with objection.
I will second that motion. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the conclusion of... We agree, we have another item, ladies and gentlemen. Another item on. We did run both of those. I apologize. We are once again at the end of tonight's meeting. Are there any announcements up on the administration?
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And our audience are in, and we're looking forward to a very, very busy construction season here.
And we will have discussion on all of that. Is there, are there any announcements? Are there any announcements from council? Hearing done? Ben, two.
We have two gentlemen who are inquiring about the theater. I guess you didn't sign up to speak, but I wonder...
We don't have anyone who's signed up to speak, but we are more than happy to hear people. You know what? We will, Mayor, I, we will put up a sign above the table for the next meetings that say public, sign up for public meeting. Thank you for noticing that. Appreciate it. Hi.
Aye.
Thank you very much for being here. We want to hear from you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Doug Ely, and the last name is spelled E-L-Y, and I live at 2108 Northland Avenue. My friend here is Rick Zonar, spelled Z-O-N-A-R, and he lives at 2105 Northland Avenue. On October 13th, 2014, we wrote the mayor and Councilman O'Leary, O'Leary, a letter concerning the demolition of what we call the old dirty movie theater. In a letter dated November 7th, 2014, received an answer from the mayor indicating that the cost of the removal of the asbestos and demolition would be approximately $800,000, and that the city, quote, "is not able to bear the financial cost." So, every effort is being made to raise the funds from other sources, including county, state, and federal governments, close quote. Further in the letter, the mayor wrote, "Rest assured, comma, the city is working hard to get the funds together to do just that." Our question is, to date, what specific progress has been made to get the funds together to do that? And basically, we would like to have a timeline. You know, if you set aside $80,000 a year, it would take 10 years, and the $80,000 would probably have increased to a million-two or some other number. So, what we're looking for is some timeline vote from the administration and the council to get rid of what, in the letter to the mayor, we wrote is certainly ugly and is also becoming a safety hazard.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Did you have something different to address?